Good morning, everybody. Before I start today's committee, the whole meeting, just like to acknowledge that this land is traditional territory, meeting ground, gathering place, traveling route at home for the Damesa, Nahiwak, Ashanave, Sakamque, Stony, Dakota, and Maite. Let's call the Committee of the Whole Meeting, the Jasper Municipal Council, to order. Today is Tuesday, October 11th, and the time is nine thirty-one. Are there any additions that anyone would like to have to the agenda today? Directions, directions, your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor DeMora. Just under Agenda Six Correspondence. Just an oral bit of advice concerning some correspondence that I received too late for the agenda.
We'll call that six point one. Any other additions? All right. With the approval of addition six point one, Mayor Ireland's correspondence. They have a motion to approve the agenda. Counselor Hall, on the table. That's carried. Agenda item four. The September twenty-seventh Committee of the Whole Minutes. Are there, is there business arising from the minutes? We don't need to approve that here, right? Your worship.
I said one question under Correspondence Section of the Agenda. It's indicated as number four oh four slash twenty-two on the minutes. I think it's the second page in about the middle. There is a motion by Counselor Wilson that's recorded. And I I haven't gone back to listen to the tape, but I'm not sure that committee can direct council to do things. They can recommend that council do things. And so there though we received a presentation at Committee of the Home at a regular council meeting that afternoon, and the motion was that council add that matter to the regular meeting for the afternoon. It's a small matter, but I think it points out the fact that we have a need to be more selective in our words when we make motions. I'm not sure that even if that was the motion that Counselor Wilson made, I'm voting on it. I'm not sure that it accurately depicts what we can be sitting as, we can recommend to council. I just, I draw that to your attention, and I don't know whether it's it's the minutes themselves that are in error or our motion. But it's something to be careful.
Thank you, your worship. You're also supposed to show how thorough you are in reviewing our document, so I appreciate that as well. Can't be any more obsequious. That was not much. Just admiration. All right. Is there any other business arising from the minutes for today? Or from the twenty-seventh of September? Okay. Well, that brings us to Agenda Item Five. Delegations. We have Ms. Robbins here from Community Futures West Yellowhead. We're going to hear it.
Morning, everybody. For those who don't know me, my name is Nancy Robbins and the General Manager at Community Futures West Yellowhead. Community Futures West Yellowhead is a federally funded, non-for-profit organization which administers Prairie's Economic Development Canada's Community Futures Program. For those of you that don't know, Prairie's Economic Development Canada is known as Prairie's Can, formerly known as Western Economic Diversification. Our primary role in the region is to promote small business growth. We do lots of business coaching, training, financing, and community economic development. Our region is on treaty six and treaty eight lands covering Jasper, Jasper National Park, Hinton, Edson, Grand Cash, all these surrounding cooperatives, Metropies, and the MDPREU, as well as Yellowhead County. Our biggest challenge is our biggest opportunity. We have a very large region, but also we have one of the diverse economies in the entire province, and so we're grateful that we're able to work in all the industries in the working in Alberta, and we're very busy office because of it. As you are aware, we're owned by the five municipalities that we serve, and we appreciate the contribution that that makes to our organization. Before I continue, I want to mention that Counselor Keller Ambien was with us for nine years. Majority of what you see in this presentation today was led with her as Chair of the organization, and we cannot move forward talking about the pandemic without her mentorship mentorship to both myself and to the staff and for all the work that she did for us in the pandemic. If you go to the next slide one more. So our immediate response in March twenty twenty is we went home like the rest of the entire world, expecting a two-week closure. And we took all our equipment home and spent practically three weeks on the telephone. If I could say anything about this time period, it was that we said, I don't know quite a bit. Called a lot of people back, answering questions, learning about a lot of federal government acronyms like SEVAs and CBA and Triple RF in order to answer everybody's questions, and it was really different for us. And a lot of the takeaways that we had during this moment was that, number one, we did not realize how much we were responsible for the mental health of our clients. And so we had a lot of conversations about what that would look like and how we could get a lot of other people involved in our organization and the work we did because we weren't trained to deal with a lot of what we were seeing. And number two, we did a three-month no-interest period on our loan portfolio. We didn't take any interest, didn't charge any interest, and didn't take any payments for three months. We knew at the time this was going to have a long-term impact on our cash flow moving forward in three to five years, and we're kind of seeing that right now. When you don't take any revenue for a three-month period, it was very difficult for us, and we're starting to see the effects of that now. And also, we quickly had to learn how to virtual coach. We had always depended on face-to-face interactions, like the best of the world. And so we radically changed the way our organization worked. And so we moved on to the relief stage in June twenty twenty, and if if we could say anything about the immediate response stage where our mantra was, I don't know, I think in the year following June twenty to twenty-one, we kind of went, well, I didn't see that coming. I think as an organization, we could do more than anything. We had to learn a lot about restrictions. We had to learn how to implement them and to understand them. We had to understand why certain industries were being targeted and others weren't, and we didn't have a lot of questions for people. We wanted to model the behavior in our office, so we implemented any restrictions that our offices had to implement, such as vaccination passports. And our organization grew. We put in two remote offices, one in Grand Cash and one in Edson. This enabled us to keep the staff safe, and we also then were able to have someone boots on the ground in both our outlined communities from Hinton and Jasper to enable us to work directly with our business community and then take away that safety of keeping everybody safe. So two of the main things we did in the relief stage, one was the business walks. Business walks were conducted as an economic development tool that were strategic and unspoken. Every business that is visited is has the same questions, and they're asked for consistency. Many of you have participated in business walks with us, and so you know that they are very rewarding. They became a very important tool in the pandemic, because what we saw was every time we would go out, we would see a different issue. And we learned that very quickly that as soon as we got information that out, that information became outdated six months later. To give you an example, in August twenty twenty, the main themes that we saw were shop local, advertising and marketing assistance, and financial assistance. With that, to a year later in August twenty twenty-one, the main issues were labor shortages, supply chain issues, and digital access. And in our work in economic development, things don't change that quickly. You kind of have to put in a lot of effort to get the long haul, so when things were changing in a six to twelve-month period, it's very, was very difficult for us to be able to do programming. However, we found the business works really worked because businesses really appreciated us coming to them. They no longer had the time to come to us. We went to them. And so we're doing business walks this month in October, November. We're going to focus on the downtown revitalization theme in all our communities, getting more joint. I've included some information on our regional leading recovery fund because I want to talk about how it was one of probably the biggest challenge our organization has ever faced. And we've been an organization for thirty-five years. It was mirrored on the SIBA program. It was originally designed to fit those that were knowledgeable for SIBA. Either they were sole proprietors, their revenue was too low, or their revenue was too high to qualify for the SIBA. It soon became a parallel program, and we did never anticipate it, how big it was going to be. We did a hundred and forty-one applications in six months, and if you've ever sat on our loan committee, you know how big a deal it is to get a hundred and forty-one loan applications. So of those a hundred and forty-one applications, a hundred and nine will approve, twenty-seven were declined, and five were withdrawn by decline. In total, we lent out three point five million dollars in a short-term term month period in the West Yellow head, and if we look at provincially, Alberta was the biggest program in the country. Alberta loan went out eighty-five billion dollars. I've included some statistics on what Jasper looks like. If you look like at Jasper, Jasper was the biggest proponent of the Triple RF, with thirty-five percent of our loans going to Jasper, which totaled one point two million dollars. And also, if you look in terms of industry, I can't divide the community down by industry. It would be too telling, and we would know right away who had what loan. But if you look in terms of who was actually applying for Triple RF loans, you'll see that arts, entertainment, and recreation was one of the highest, which is one of the most of the businesses that are sole proprietors or home-based businesses in Jasper are bidding into. And also professional science and technical. You'll see about that as well. We also had a tremendous amount of farmers that were unable to get assistance elsewhere, and so in Yellowhead County, the farmers that were on the east end of the county were really active in our program. And we end up finding a lot of different clients than we normally have at Community Futures. So now we're in the recovery mode, and if I could go from, I don't know, to, well, I didn't see that coming. I think I'm going back to, I don't know. Because frankly, we don't know what we don't know, but we have a few certain themes moving ahead over the next two-year period, what we anticipate to happen for the next three to two years. Number one, small businesses in the West Yellowhead are not prepared for any kind of business interruption or any kind of closure in the recovery mode of the pandemic. Moving forward, we are planning to have coaching and training sessions on just that, preparing for business interruptions. We know our economy is still recovering, and we need to support our small businesses as much as possible to ensure that any kind of closure or interruption to businesses is understood and that their engagement and support to our businesses navigating uncertainty. We have found that small business owners have a unique trauma from the pandemic and that their stress is unique from anyone else's. Their needs are unique, and they need to be identified as such. Second of all, we're coaching more about cash flow now than ever before. It used to be business clients were our number one way of coaching. Now we talk about cash flow all the time. We do know that recovery is taking longer than expected. We're heading into twenty twenty-three. We can expect to see a global recession. And at the end of December of twenty twenty-three, all the businesses have to pay back their Triple RF and SIBA loans. So we're going to have a tremendous amount of pressure on cash flow and capital and access to that capital in the next eighteen months. Digital access is a tool coming out of the pandemic that every business needs to have. We've been fortunate enough to partner with Business Link on our digital services squad program, and we have someone in our office for the next six months that's dedicated just to digital access. Can't stress enough that people still want curbside. They still want to order online. They still want to do it. If businesses are not implementing this into their business, they need to do it soon. Number four, businesses are going to close, and we have to be okay with that as a community. They're closing their businesses for a host of reasons, and every business closure is unique. Frankly, most have not survived during the pandemic, have been because of the tremendous financial and the personal strain and stress of the pandemic over the past two years. But with the bad news, there's good. We've seen a higher number of startups in the West Yellowhead than we've ever seen before. So entrepreneurship is alive and well. It's just really, really changing because of the pandemic. And lastly, the nature of work has changed in the pandemic. Labor shortages and working from home have drastically impacted our economy, and they have changed the way small businesses operate in our region. We need to address this issue moving forward in a strategic way that is beneficial to both employers, employees, and small businesses. So what are the next steps? In the next six months, I'm going to come back to you and talk about two major projects that we currently have underway. We are involved in a Triple RF project that will do a needs assessment and a gap analysis of all the recipients in the program, in the province. So we are working on that. So that is finding out when the gaps are of these businesses that actually access capital in the recovery, in the relief stage, and what they need moving forward. Second of all, as you're fully aware, you're one of the municipalities that are partnering with us in the regional business expansion program in the entire West Yellowhead. That program right now is in the field. And we will understand from this project, the post-pandemic needs of each of our municipalities, and how those needs are unique and we understand regionally when we move forward. As with anything we have learned in this pandemic, all information and data helps us find solutions for our small businesses to be successful and to survive the recovery mode for the next couple of years. Thank you for taking the time for listening to our experience in the pandemic.
Thank you, Ms. Robbins. I can certainly appreciate having to go through some loan applications. I think the most I've ever experienced was maybe four at the max, and that takes the better half of the day happening. Anyway, so a hundred and forty-seven thousand million. So I appreciate everybody's efforts and work that went into that. Just want to make sure I'm talking loud enough. Right. Does anyone have any questions on Nancy Robbins' presentations, Counselor Melick?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor DeMora, and I'll ask a question. And it may not be within Community Futures, and I might see to administration if they can answer a question about the status currently of our Alberta Rural Renewal Application. Is Community Futures part of that with the FCSS? Or with the, with our efforts to Jeanette Pragon?
We work behind the scenes with Jeanette Marcoue at the Jacksonville Public Education Center, but I believe it has come to council through her organization. We just were supportive of her in putting that application in.
Director Reed.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, through the Counselor Melick. So Ms. Pragon did announce that we were accepted as a community under that Aurora Renewal Stream. So that program is open and eligible for employers to apply to, and really, as Ms. Robbins indicated, they they should speak directly to Ms. Pragon over that, or Marcoue. I think I'm mixing that up. I apologize. But anyway, that program is, we are now an eligible community, and we are successful in that application under Jeanette's leadership there. So anybody who's, any employer who's looking to fast-track an employee through that program will go to the Department of Education.
Thank you both for that. I think that some, with so many programs that have been available and they're winding down, sometimes individuals and businesses in the community aren't sure which agency to go through. So I appreciate that clarity.
And we all work together, so when someone comes to us, we know where to send them.
I think your quick attempt at autocorrect. Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor DeMora. I have a couple of questions for you. The remote offices in Grand Cash and Edson, will those remain open?
We've had a change of staffing in Grand Cash, so no to Grand Cash, and we still are going on year, almost year four in Edson.
Okay, awesome. My other question, have you had businesses reach out from Jasper because of the Tadern fire? And that SIBA is a loan?
Yes.
Would that apply for some of the businesses in Jasper that were affected by the fire?
No, the SIBA loan is part of the regional, the pandemic recovery. That is no longer open for applications. Yes, we have quite a few businesses that have reached out to us and are, we've just listened and helped with answering questions, helping them with the wording of their insurance and how to talk to insurance companies. So thank you.
Your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor DeMora. Thank you, Ms. Robbins, for your report and for your assistance to communities in the region through the pandemic and beyond and continuing. I did have a couple of specific questions. You mentioned that early on in the pandemic, Community Futures West Yellowhead I think waived, waived interest or deferred interest?
Waived it. Didn't charge it.
Right, for the first three months.
For the three months that everyone was closed, yes.
And so that is just forgone revenue to Community Futures?
Yes.
And was Community Futures able to make that decision internally, or are there federal jurisdictional rules that required approval for that?
Yes and no. We work for a Board of Directors who is responsible for the loan portfolio, so it was their decision to make. However, it was highly recommended by the potential association, and WG was not first-hand also made a recommendation. We did a lot of consultation with the other offices in the province as we wanted to be in power with what they were doing. And it became a common thing. Most offices do it.
Thank you for that. One of the acronyms that we use is the Triple RF loans. So there are a number of those out. It sounds like maybe thirty-eight are shown in Jasper. What did you say were the repayment requirements for those loans?
So that is, the original loan was a forty thousand dollar loan. And if it's repaid back by December twenty twenty-three, it will be ten percent, or ten thousand dollars is forgiven on that forty thousand. So then, if they applied for the forty thousand and were eligible, got that loan, they could apply for an additional twenty thousand. We call that our extra expansion loan. And for that twenty thousand, if the forty thousand dollars is paid back, fifty percent of that will be forgiven. So clients have a sixty thousand dollar debt, of which they will have to pay forty thousand by December twenty twenty-three. If it's not paid back by that date on January twenty twenty-four, it becomes a sixty thousand dollar loan at a four percent rate. Now, that four percent rate is unique. We're finding out from our mainstream banks that for the people that have the sister loan, the SIBA loan, the Canada Emergency Business Accountant, that is going to be prime plus two percent. And understand that by the time January twenty twenty-two hits or twenty-four hits, prime could be ten percent. So that amount for both programs needs to be paid back in a two-year period. So we are working with our clients right now to really discuss. That's why we're really focusing on cash flow. We're trying to get them to pay it back early because we understand that the majority of us are not going to be able to pay back sixty thousand dollars for interest in a two-year period. And so we're really encouraging, and even if they're not a client of ours, we're working with them to figure out how to pay that before December thirty-first.
Thank you for that. And finally, you you mentioned that businesses are not prepared for more business interruption.
Right.
I was wondering, in terms of coaching that Community Futures West Yellowhead provides, whether there is an element of coaching with respect to business interruption laws, because even though I understand emotionally and economically, business interruption is something that businesses are not prepared for. It may yet the, the fire that we just experienced with the power outage should not be considered a one-off. I think businesses have to look at business interruption, whether this, of course, it's never desirable, but it might be a reality. So I'm just wondering the extent that you might be able to provide coaching on that matter, and whether there might be anything that we can do to assist to prepare people for something that is of course highly undesirable, but we should, I think, position our community to be prepared regardless.
And, and the reality is we're not unique. We've seen this happen to businesses since, like Board Mac and the floods in the south, and also there's a tremendous amount of work being done by our neighbors in British Columbia in the northwest, which returns to disaster recovery, and they're similar to Jasper in a lot of respects in terms of fire threat. I think moving forward, we need to really start talking about disaster recovery and disaster recovery preparation and what that looks. I mean, we know as a reality of that when a community evacuates, it's a minimum of thirty days sometimes before people get back. And so businesses need to, I think we need to have more open conversations about what that looks like. And Jasper's not alone. I mean, the whole region needs to be prepared for it. So it is on our radar. There is some work that we are hoping to do within terms of disaster recovery for everybody in terms of what it means for business communities. So hopefully, in the new year, we'll start looking on that.
Thank you for that. And one final question, if I may. Whatever Western Economic Diversification became, Prairie's Can, what is the federal department that funds Prairie's Can?
They're economic development and innovation, I believe. It has changed again. I believe that's what it is. Whatever, for the first time in Community Futures nationally, all the regional development associations are under one umbrella. So it's been very interesting to watch that as we're hearing a lot more about how the grass screen around the east coast and that kind of thing. But whatever the economic development, innovation, I can't tell you exactly what the name of the department is. Thank you. Yeah.
Great. I'd like to thank you for your report and how concise it is and clear, and there's a lot of information in a short package. So thank you very much. I also want to thank you personally, and I think our region is that much more healthy because there's a lot of behind-the-scenes work that you do that I don't think you get enough credit for. So I think our region's a lot healthier and stronger because you pour back a lot of things. So thank you.
Thank you.
Trying to be as efficient as possible here, Counselor Melick, so that brings us to Agenda Item Five, delegation, or sorry, Agenda Item Number Six, Correspondence. Six point one, Mayor Ireland wanted to add something.
I did. Thank you, Deputy Mayor DeMora. In consideration of Counselor Melick's timelines, I will be quick as well. I received a phone call late on Friday just asking a number of questions about assessments. And not so much the assessment, but the the means of updating assessments. So as we know, our assessor assesses one-fifth of the town every five years approximately, and so the people who live in that area get a questionnaire. And this particular resident And this particular resident indicated that that resident and others were concerned about what they consider to be somewhat intrusive questions on questionnaire. Um, and an apparent disconnect between what the assessor asks and what the Development Authority, which in our case is far as Canada, should already know if the people are applying for development permits as they should. And most of the information that the assessor was looking for should all be, already be a matter of threat. Anyway, I draw that to your attention um simply because it seems to me that those might be avenues of questions for our assessor next time the assessor visits. And the real question then is to administration and not requiring an answer today, but can we be informed when we might next expect to have our assessor present and would it typically not be until next spring, which is a very long time for me to turn and obtain the information that I received on Friday?
Thank you. Thank you, worship. Uh, I think Ms. Malachek has stepped up here to answer your questions. Go ahead, please.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, it's good to come um to your worship. Um, yes, at at any moment, if you would wish to have um him coming and do a presentation or um if there's any other questions, then definitely make a range for something. It doesn't have to wait until his normal time that he comes in to present. And um and and what you're alluding to is a request for information. And um there are some legal implications behind what the assessor is allowed asking us. He is allowed to ask those questions and um it is mandated that if, if that occurs, if those properties are requested of that information, that they, they have to, it says within the regulations that they must reply. If they do not reply, um, then it just removes some ability to um contest or uh, not appeal but or complain about their assessed values going forward. So it's um, it's very, it's a way to uh for them to be able to have the most accurate information as possible, allowing them to assess that property at a fair uh value. Um, because um there, there could be some changes that may have not been communicated um down the road. And that is, that is um the reason for that I request for information, but he can definitely come in. Um, I'm sure I may give a moment to uh do a presentation.
Well, thank you for that. I I very much appreciate it and it it adds some real clarity and context to the issue. So with that, I can potentially direct the resident or maybe residents um to their M L A as well because the the rules that govern our assessor are set by the province, not by us. And so he has to follow provincial law. And if the resident is concerned that the provincial law is intrusive, then the resident maybe has to speak with the the M L A or other provincial authorities. So I appreciate that response. Thank you very much.
Yeah, and just for clarity, thank you, your worship and and Ms. Malachek. You know, uh, assessments have a collective effect on each other in their areas. So um, you know, the information that's provided is helpful to your neighbors and, you know, people down the street. So um, that's, that's why that's important as well. So if assessments go up or down, that has an effect on your problem. All right, appreciate that. Um, that brings us to the next agenda item, uh, seven new business. Uh, we have seven point one S block parking. It's not a box, it's parking. S block parking business alone, would you believe that, please? Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. I, I'm afraid I have to admit, this was the longest standing item on the motion action list and it is here today for discussion. Um, so that motion came to us last fall and it was to bring back a discussion, a policy level discussion about S block parking. So the parameters were somewhat broad. Um, therefore, we decided to address uh sort of the three types of parking that are currently available in the area. And as you can see in the report, um, administration has a recommendation that uh committee direct administration to develop a residential winter parking program for the vacant stall in the S block parking lot. So that is the new lot that is located by the train tracks. And we are also recommending that uh committee direct administration to propose a fee increase for the storage lots. And that would be through the storage lots bylaw. Um, and essentially, under background, there's a map showing uh the different areas and what they're used for. And so the storage lots, uh, there's a long history of the municipality operating those. And they are for residents and mostly uh consist of R Vs and trailers, recreational trailers. And um and we have a storage lots bylaw which sets out the cost and all the fees and penalties associated with that service. Uh, additionally, the new parking lot, which we refer to as the S block parking, uh, was developed in, in twenty nineteen and started operating in twenty twenty. And that is also the responsibility of the bylaw enforcement service to manage the agreements for that area. And um, and then additionally, parking in S block more generally, it is our main industrial area. So there's lots of commercial vehicles out there. And there are a few challenges as outlined uh in the report, including not all properties are fenced. There is no white line on the street. So sometimes determining exactly where vehicles are is a bit of a challenge for bylaw. Um, but certainly they have a good working relationship with operators in the area. And when something arises, we try to contact them and go for compliance as opposed to enforcement. And um it is largely complaint driven. We do keep an eye out and they do patrol the area, but that is where that sits. So under discussion, we are proposing a few things. Um, I'm, I could take you through it, but I'm also happy to take questions. But essentially, the S block parking lot is not seeing the use that we would like to see. And I think that was part of the prompt to get this report in front of council. And there are opportunities that we could use it a bit differently. And that's what we are proposing here to increase usage and increase the services to residents and increase revenue potentially. And then the storage lots, um, the leases on the storage lots have been expired since twenty nineteen. And at the time, there was a discussion for annual renewals with Parks Canada. And I think part of the discussion was that should that be a service that the municipality keeps offering or not? And that is very much a conversation that is one for council to have. So we tried to provide some information in here as to what the possibilities are and the requirements if we decide to con- continue operating them. And I think that captures what we wanted to bring forward, so I'm happy to take questions. Thank you.
Well, councillors are assessing what they'd like to ask. I I would like to lead with a question. I'm trying to speak live, but uh I wish I, we had uh councillor Keller ready here and I might have to lean on, on the mayor a little bit. From my recollection, I believe at one point that there was some funding money or grants available. And we saw a need uh to remove or at least have some enforcement opportunities on our streets and in S block. And decided to go with the development of this uh project specifically to clean things up. For um equipment and uh commercial vehicles within the community. And we knew at the time that there was going to be a challenge with enforcement and compliance. And uh, but where I felt like we were sure that this was going to be a successful um project. And um I'm not putting blame on anybody else. I just wanted to know um you know, how we ended up here with um, you know, the massive amount of vacancy. And and I do understand from the report that was given, um, the challenges, but um and I, and I understand that we've had a change in, in administration too. Maybe that directives changed as well. Thank you. This is a don't.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. I think um your, your question or the way you're framing your approach here speaks to the commercial use of the lot, which is something that when we reviewed the information and the formal directions we had from council, the only motion that we have on file for the use of the parking lot designates parking for community members. So internally, we've asked ourselves the question, when did this become a commercial parking lot? Because that is how we promote it. That's how the application forms are. That is the way it operates. And um, that was back in, in the time when we didn't, council didn't pass motions at committee of the whole. So perhaps that direction was provided verbally but not captured through our documentation. But that is why we're um proposing a change in use that could target or that could become a service for residential users for winter storage. And then uh turning the vacant stalls into paid parking for the summer would, would provide alternative uses. However, if the council's sense on this is still that it should be commercial and that compliance and enforcement in town in general should be increased to drive uh people to rent those stalls is, is a bit of an interesting situation for the bylaw team to be in. As in, they are enforcing something that we are then charging a fee to come use a service that's administered by the same department is an interesting premise for them to, to go out there with. But certainly, uh, that could be an outcome of today's discussion that uh councils wish would be to continue using that parking lot as a commercial parking and attempt to increase usage just by increasing enforcement in town, in, in S block, but also in town. And um, so that is one option that could potentially increase commercial usage. I think the other aspect to consider is the cost. I think for a lot of businesses, a hundred and fifty dollars a month is not necessarily an expense that they want to consider. And therefore, if we were to increase the usage to residential users as well, if businesses are not willing to pay a hundred and fifty a month, there's a very, there's kind of a low chance that, that residents will for their private vehicles, right? So um, the cost recovery fee for this parking lot at the time was calculated at, at four hundred and fifty dollars a month. Would be the cost that we would need to charge to recover the cost of the asset. As you mentioned Deputy Mayor Demota, there's been some grant funding, so it's not necessarily all municipal money that went towards this. Um, but certainly we're, we're open to hearing some council direction on the, on the purpose of that law. And from a policy level, how you would like to see it operate and we can take that back and develop proposals accordingly.
Right, I appreciate that. You know, I, I look at the price of, of a commercial lot and then also uh, you know, what it costs to rent a storage locker in town. I think for the size of a lot and what you're getting, um, you know, for a vehicle, uh, from the work that went behind that, I have to, um, commend Mr. Jones for the uh information that he brought forward. I think that's a, it's a pretty reasonable price. Different businesses might differ, uh, but you know, that's all up on affordability. Um, I, I know that there, there was only one motion that we could find on this, but I, I'd also like to see what recommendations came forward to council at the time as well as we have one here today, because I am still under the impression that the intent was to uh clean up commercial vehicles and equipment off of our uh streets. And, and I think that maybe the foresight at the time, uh, it was designed, set up, the motion was for community members seeing that we might be here today. So um, I commend council for, for the task for having that foresight. Councillor Melnick, you gave me a nod. You'd like to speak to this?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. I have a series of questions for, more for information and understanding. Um, just to make sure that, that I'm getting the whole picture of the industrial area parking situation. So we have seven lots, it looks like, that are storage lots and we rent uh space there at three hundred and nineteen dollars annually. Is that correct? So somebody parks there, they pay three hundred and nineteen. But if they park in our new facility, they're charged the equivalent of eighteen hundred dollars a year. It's a hundred and fifty a month times twelve, being eighteen hundred. And it seems like a wide discrepancy, which is maybe why we only have one quarter of that lot rented. Um, I wasn't on council when the um, when the fees were set up. Uh, so you know, there may be an opportunity for us to review the fees in both the seven lots. Is that too low? And in the new lot, are the fees too high? Um, because in the end, we want to provide a, a service to our community and still generate revenue. Um, so do I have all that, that I'm understanding everything there correctly, right?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota through the councillor Melnick. Um, yes, that, that is accurate. And that is part, partly why one of the recommendations in, in the report is to committee direct administration to review the fees on the storage lots bylaw. Uh, considering that we have, I think, ninety-five stalls available, which are all full and sixty-five names on the waiting list sort of suggests that there might be an ability to increase the fee here and that people would still be interested in the, in the service. The, your assessment on the fees is accurate. The only difference is that currently we only accept commercial applications for the S block lot as opposed to the uh, storage lots are all private use. So in um, private trailers, RVs, could be vehicles, as long as it's something that's insured and worth, roadworthy is the, is the criteria. So residential versus commercial use, and yes, the fees are, are quite different and could be adjusted to yield different benefits.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And, and you mentioned a, a fee or cost of four hundred and fifty dollars per month. Is that to maintain the new parking lot? And is that for the entire lot or is it for stall? I think I'm trying to, I, I don't have a, a context for that comment of the four hundred and fifty dollars.
Yes, thank you for the question. Um, that is from the previous reports on the development of the lot. And essentially, from an asset management perspective, if we wanted to fund the renewal of that lot over its lifetime, we would need to rent each stall for four hundred and fifty dollars a month to recuperate the cost of the asset over its lifetime. So it's from an asset management perspective was the, the initial calculation. But um, at the time, it was recognized that four fifty might be a bit steep for, for usage. And as we see now, it's one fifty um for the smaller stalls. And there are two stall lengths in the S block parking lot and the other. So it's one fifty a month plus G S D for a twenty-two feet long stall, but there are also thirty-eight feet stalls, which are two hundred a month. So there's two different prices there. But yeah, so the four fifty was in the context of asset management. If we were to repay for that asset over the course of its lifetime, we would need to charge four fifty.
Thank you for that. If I may, one last question. I, I do see activity on the west side of that lot. Um, where there is um pieces of equipment and ground being broken. Is that an extension to that lot? Or does that have something to do with uh, uh wastewater or um? And you may not know the answer. It's, it's been interesting over the past ten days to see that activity there.
Deputy Mayor Demota through the councillor Melnick, I think I know that that is the sanity dump. It is the project to update our, our sanity dump, which was grant funded, which I know the funding was just extended and that's in that same area.
Thank you for all the information.
Thank you councillor Melnick. Thank you, Mrs. Adon. Councillor Hall, you have a question?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. Again, just for clarity and thank you councillor Melnick for asking all the questions I had as well. So commercial vehicles cannot park in the storage lots of just the private residents. And so you're saying four hundred and fifty dollars per lot per month over the year would maintain the lifetime of that lot?
Deputy Mayor Demota through the Counselor Hall, that is for the paved parking lot in S block, so the new asset. Um and part of the challenges we're having with the private or the residential, I guess is the best way to put it, residential storage lots is that. The level of service there is quite different as in um. They're not uh leveled or gravelled or the stalls are not marked and um. If the municipality is to continue operating those storage lots, certainly from an asset management perspective, we would be looking at. Uh investments needed in those properties to maintain a a level of service versus um the stalls are. I want to suggest bigger in uh the S block parking lot. They are paved, they're easier to get access to. Um. Another difference is that the residential storage lots are fenced and locked. So if you have your travel trailer in there, it should also be locked, of course, but there's that sort of extra level of. Of security, so the service is a bit different in in each area.
Thank you for that. Um so that works out to roughly like three hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year. When we multiply those numbers, what is the lifetime of that water? What is?
That one, I'm afraid I would need Mr. Greathead or Mr. Hutton to. Speak to it from an asset management perspective and and that's also a reflection of how we operate. So the operations department is responsible for. The asset management and the maintenance and the snow removal and the line painting and and all that kind of stuff versus. The bylaw department operates the service in the facility and looks after the rental agreements, payments, things like that. But we can, we can, if there's an interest from council to know more about the asset lifecycle and cost, we can certainly provide that information.
Just one last question. Right now, there's fifteen out of sixty one spaces rented. Have we at times had more? Than fifteen? And are those spaces, are there plugins for electricity or are they just a lot?
Deputy Mayor Demota through the Counselor Hall, I don't believe there are outlets that is um. To be confirmed, I don't think so, but I can find out. And um. I think the usage is pretty much as high as we've as we've seen it, and I also think that there was a um. There was a change in ownership or a change in practice in other area that drove. A certain number of stalls to be rented in the last year or two. So so changes in business premises and access to parking for commercial vehicles. Is very subject to what happens in the private sector and it might create a demand for our stalls. Um but certainly. If people have other options that are less costly. That's what they've been doing, right? And I think that's what explains why there's such low usage in that commercial law.
Thank you, Counselor Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. Do have a plethora of questions, um but I'm sure they'll all get answered. My recollection is similar to Counselor Demota or Deputy Mayor Demota that. The initial impetus for this lot was to provide an option so that. Storage of equipment, particularly commercially related equipment on residential streets. Would have some other place to go. And so if. The record shows. Community use rather than commercial, um I expect that. That reflects an attempt that this was not intended to be another. RV visitor parking lot. It was for community use, although my recollection is that. The community use was targeted toward commercial, which is all reflected in in what we've done. And so the idea was that there's lots of equipment, or at least we were. That I believe there was lots of equipment parked on. Public streets throughout town, um because there wasn't any option available to put it elsewhere. I I have some questions about the number of stalls, um and it might be that there are sixty one. Rentable stalls, but I have a recollection that. After some design changes, we wound up with, I think, seventeen stalls that are. Parallel to the roadway and that we excise those stalls so they were no longer part of. The rental stalls, they're just. Public stalls available uh for short term use along. The only road in S block that now had occurred. And so had. Have those ones been taken out of the inventory? Uh do we have sixty one less? I think it was seventeen, or did we start with? Seventy eight and now we have sixty one rental stalls? I I don't need the answers.
See, I wish I had Mr. Jones here. People know all that, but certainly. What I can say is that those seven seventeen stalls that are on street are not. Being rented, as in they are accessible to the public as street parking, whether they were part of the sixty one or not, I can find out.
Right, and and I would appreciate that because it it makes quite a difference to the scale of use. Fifteen is not very high, but it's a higher percentage of sixty one minus seventeen. It is a sixty one. The next question I have. Or a series of questions relates to the other lots, the seven lots that Counselor Melnick referenced. And so. The leases expired, you said, in April of. Twenty nineteen, and so that would be. The head lease between the Crown Federally and the municipality, but we we are still in. Possession of those. Um is the rent for those seven lots? Combined with the roughly seven hundred thousand dollars of annual land rent that we pay?
Thank you for the question, your worship. I um. I I want to turn the question on its head and ask you, do do we pay land rent separately on any other leases? I don't think so.
No, um so we have a number of leases uh. And a number of non-leases, so all of our public streets and lanes and and. Parts and wastewater treatment plants and the water treatment plants and the cemetery are all part of. Um the seven hundred thousand dollar annual land rent. And my question is, are these ones any different? Did we have? Like this refers to leases and some of the other ones, we don't have leases. We don't actually have a lease for. Our streets, I don't think. We just, we pay to use them. And to maintain them and to maintain the services underneath them and all the rest of it, but I. I wonder whether these particular leases are different.
Your worship, I believe. It is. It is a lease. So it's a it's a land use agreement and there is a ninety eight dollar registration fee to renew it. But there are no other associated fees with the renewal of those leases. Which leads me to believe that. Land rent covers for those parcels and. I might be off on this one, but I believe they're. They're either institutional land, so our our parking lots are considered institutional, whether storage lots are. Services and storage. Or whether they are institutional is a is a good question. Having that said, working on that map, I think they are services and. Whatever S block is zoned as is the zoning of those parcels. But there is no. Lease fee other than the admin fee to renew them.
Thank you for that. Still with respect to those expired leases for those seven lots. Um the report indicates, and I think accurately, that. Apart from outdoor storage. There is not much other use that could be made of those lots. Because we have effectively hit the development cap that was imposed in two thousand. One. About two weeks before the local government. Um. Have we attempted at all to see whether there is? A commercial demand for. Covered structures on those. Seven lots and block, as that is. You trace people, for example, um have a need. For. Service lots. I need it would be different than simply outdoor storage, so we we know that um. We've got challenges in this called Waterville. We're trying to satisfy. Community demand and some of that is commercial, but do we know? Have we done any investigation to see whether there is a different need other than storage of recreational vehicles by residents? For those seven lots?
Deputy Mayor Demota through the Mayor Ireland. I I believe that part of the conversation that an intergovernmental meeting with Parks Canada is. Is how we ended up with expired leases since twenty nineteen, so that question you're asking was the very discussion. At the time with Parks, which suggested that. Bringing bringing the services from Waterville into S block is part of the community sustainability plan. Except there's no room in S block to bring those businesses over. Those lots could be. The lots, except there can't be any development because of the commercial cap, so it's sort of this. Political policy interagency discussion that. Administration has not engaged in any further, but that also, like the fact that the leases have been expired since twenty nineteen is. Is a bit concerning, is something we should act on. Um. But I think you you've captured the 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 issues or the debate, but their administration has not put any. Effort or resources into that discussion since, I want to say, twenty nineteen or twenty twenty.
Well, thank you um for that response and and I raise it more um. As an item for council than for administration. Well, I appreciate your response. It's not administration's job to sort that out, but. We will, I think later this month, be having a intergovernmental meeting with Parks Canada. And I think that one of the topics that needs discussing is the commercial cap, particularly as it relates to. Light industrial use and what may appear to be the underuse of. Really limited available land in the community, so I I thank you for raising it in the context of this report. Those are my questions. Thank you Deputy Mayor.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. Um kind of makes me think about when we were in Mount, we're strat planning and visiting there. Uh industrial park, they had a bit of a mix of residential and commercial. And then I wonder if that could be a conversation we also maybe bring forward to Parks again, just a thought.
Thank you. Counselor Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota, that I have a question that, just for clarity as we're moving into budget. Good bedtime reading, the twenty two twenty four budget will be soon to get the twenty three to twenty five budget. But under protective and legislative services, the page on parking. Um my notes are on it are contradictory, so I just like to get clarity on. The parking revenue reflected on this page is it. I it is a street parking, it's a paid parking program. And part of my note says it's a S block as well. And does it also include the parking fees for the seven other lots? In other words. The S block parking and the seven lots. And the street parking should all be reflected on this one page, or if not, where does that other revenue show up? I just for clarity for moving into budget twenty three.
Deputy Mayor Demota through the Counselor Melnick, um your statement is accurate, so all of the parking fees, so the storage lots. S block and paid parking. All are captured under the parking service profile or page that you're looking at in the budget and we've been. Debating whether parking is part of bylaw or parking is separate, how do we show that revenue? But yes, your your statement is accurate. It it is reflective of all of the parking revenue, which includes. The the two topics that are on the agenda today and paid parking.
And and I guess the last one is the. The fees that we charge for the use of parking stalls would be the fourth component that would be in this page as well.
Deputy Mayor Demota through the Counselor Melnick, I'm thinking three streams, so the storage lots, the residential storage lots. The commercial S block parking and paid parking. So I'm not sure if there's a fourth.
The fourth would be the sidewalk seating. Uh fees for the use of parking stalls, and if they're not in this page, where would they be reflected? And and again, if if um it may be yourself or Ms. Melanchuk, just for us moving forward. So we understand that the end of the day. When we look at the parking budget for twenty twenty two and the actual revenues for twenty twenty two. What was all captured in that page?
Counselor Melnick, I can confirm that the sidewalk seating fees are not in the parking. Budget, they were under bylaw, which is a separate page in in the document you're looking at. Um. And also noting that. The fees for sidewalk seating, the revenue generated by sidewalk seating has increased tremendously in twenty twenty two. Um I I have budgeted numbers here, I can't tell you exactly what the actual was for twenty twenty. One or two, but we were looking at something around fifteen thousand dollars for sidewalk seating and we're at. We're around more around forty right now and we're projecting sixty five for next two. But that is in the bylaw segment of the budget, not in the parking segment.
Thank you for the clarity, appreciate it.
Thank you, Counselor Melnick, and um I'm not buying time for others to to come up with more questions. But I I do, getting back to that question, we still have another one. But uh I I appreciate you bringing that to mind and and again, my memory. Doesn't help me going back to last year's budget when you were discussing this, but. I was under the impression that um the the street stalls, the parking stalls. Uh for seating um in the commercial use of public space. Um was based on parking revenue for those stalls, so if. But that revenue now is being removed from the actual. Paid parking revenue that used in the sidewalk seating program revenue. That's it, that's just kind of where, I thought they were different and separate. Thank you.
Thank you for the question, uh Deputy Mayor Demota. I think. What happened is the fee for sidewalk seating was set for twenty twenty two was set after the budget was passed. And um you're correct that it was based on. The what a stall could generate and for the season, so from May to October, if it was full every hour of the day between nine AM to nine PM. It would yield a certain amount of dollars and I think sixteen fifty. Uh for the season was the number that we brought to council and that represented twenty percent of what a single stall could generate. And in twenty twenty two, council voted in favor of reducing that fee by fifty percent. So in in the eight hundred dollar range was the fee that we actually charged. Which also explains our budget projections from for next year, so subject to council setting the rate again. If it were to go back to sixteen fifty, so the hundred percent uh recommended fee, then we would see more revenue. Uh coming from sidewalk seating and certainly um Ms. Melanchuk is in the middle of. Outlining all that in the budget and what shows where and what happens and how how it shows in our service profiles. And how that's presented to council, we could certainly take your input into consideration.
Yeah, and I'll definitely save that in my notes uh for questions at that time. And to keep us from veering off into uh sidewalk seating, I want to bring us back to S block so that we can. Stay on a relevant topic. Um I went back and looked at some of the communications and and I believe. Um before going to PDAC, prior to construction on S block. Uh there was something brought to council at committee on July. Ninth of twenty nineteen. Now, because our website's changed and we don't have access to the legal documents. I know that we passed um the budget. the budget in 2018 or maybe early 2019, whenever the budget was decided for that year on S Block parking. I just, and it's not the point fingers. Like this is by no means, I don't, this is an analysis against that scenario. I just, I wanted, I just want to know just like five years from now, people might want to know the decisions that were made on S Block now and the recommendations that were put forward. So we don't really have access to that info anymore. And I just, it would be helpful that if we could have.
On the standard minutes table for 2019.
Yeah, we I understand that. I don't see the recommendation that was put forward to council on there. And when I do go back to the 2019 agendas and minutes, I I don't see the the actual recommendation there. So maybe I'm missing it. I don't know. But anyway, regardless, I I'm not going to give direction to administration solely. I guess that has to come from council and until we have a little bit more time to discuss that, I don't want to drive that today. It would just be helpful for me. Having said that, are there any more questions from the council? Well, again, I'm not trying to be a stick in the mud right now. And if that information is made available, we can find it later. That'd be great. I'm just not having the focus trying to manage the meeting and finding documents at this point. Counselor directing there.
Deputy Mayor Demota, I'm not sure i- if that's helpful or if that's what you're looking for or not. But I do have both the minutes and the agenda package from from that meeting you're referring to. And I think that was part of the question you raised earlier. So the potential uses for S Block. So I have a list here and that was from Mr. at the time of what could it be used for? And then council selected from that list to say designated parking for community members was the outcome. But certainly, that was also before we started doing paid parking. So those decisions made in 2019, 2020 did not were not reflective of our experience with paid parking in the community at large, right? Which might change which direction council might decide to go in. But yeah, I'll leave it at that. But I, we have that information and we can forward it if that's helpful for your thought process.
It's good. If it's there and it's available, I'll find it. But I appreciate that. And again, just the foresight. Thank you. Any other questions? Oh, Counselor Waxer, I'm very sorry. You know what? I apologize for not acknowledging that you were zooming in from PEI again, and we really appreciate that. Thank you for your presence here today. And I'm sorry I missed your hand there. Thank you.
Thank you. Through you, Deputy Mayor Demota to Administration. My question is, if you are parked in one of the fenced lots, do you have year round ability to park year round? Is the first part of my question. Or only for the winter months?
Thank you for the question, Counselor Waxer. You can park there year round. Having that said, access in the winter might be a different story. So whether we plow those lots and whether you're able to pull your property in and out of the lot. So I'm thinking a large recreational trailer, for example. That's something I would have to clarify, but it, the units are there year round.
And my second question was that would we anticipate a similar fee structure for behind the fences in the unpaid lots as we would for RVs as we would in the in the S Block?
Deputy Mayor Demota through Counselor Waxer. That is part of the research that administration would undertake. Shall council direct us to look at a proposal for winter use of the S Block parking lot? As I outlined earlier, the service is a bit different. So a paid parking lot versus the the current condition of the storage lots and as you mentioned, whether they're fenced or not and and what other comparable services are, what kind of fees are associated with them in other communities is something we would look at them and certainly looking at if Jasperites were to use a different location in Valmont or Hinton, for example, how do we compare? And and what kind of fee should be associated? Would be part of the upcoming work if we get a council direction to go that way.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Good questions. So then are there any other ones that have been asked? Counselor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. I think we've had a good discussion on what's in front of us and I'm prepared to make a motion along the lines of the recommendations from administration to move this along. And so if I might make that motion, that committee direct administration to develop a residential winter parking program for vacant stalls in the S Block parking lot and report back at an upcoming committee of the whole and that committee direct administration to propose a fee increase to the storage lots by law number 208 and report back to an upcoming committee of the whole meeting. I think that'll give administration the opportunity to come back with perhaps some numbers for us to look at. And then we can decide the where those lots will will play in the 2023, 2024 budget.
Thank you for that motion. Is there any debate? Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I do support this motion. The second part about increasing these, the storage lots, just quick math, it's just under $27 a month, I I think is quite low compared to. And I also wonder how long that's been the rate and maybe it is time to increase it. But I do support the motion.
Thank you, Counselor Hall. Your worship.
I think Counselor Melnick are taking ball. I was about to to propose a slightly different motion. And I'm not sure that I can offer this as a friendly amendment. Potentially I can. It changes the motion somewhat. I would have recommended that committee direct administration to develop not a residential winter parking program, but a revised parking program. I think winter residential, residential winters is too restrictive. There might be other options. So simply a revised parking program for stalls, I would strike vacant. We can't have a program for occupied stalls and for vacant stalls that doesn't sit with me. So I would, I would make those changes. And if that can be considered by the deputy mayor as a friendly amendment, then I'd leave it to Counselor Melnick. But I would suggest a wording change for the first recommendation that committee direct administration to develop a revised parking program for stalls in the S Block parking lot and report back at an upcoming committee of the whole meeting and the second vote as it was proposed by Counselor Melnick.
Well, who am I to challenge that? Yeah, I would allow that if Counselor Melnick would be open to.
I am good with the changes to the to the recommendations for administration. And I check that there may not have.
Okay. Does administration have that motion captured and that was delivered? Okay, we have two thumbs up, maybe four. So okay. So everyone understands the motion. I'll call it on the paper. That's carried. Oh, by the way. Thank you, Counselor Waxer. All right. Appreciate that. Mr. Mayor, your worship.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. Before we leave the topic entirely, I have an additional motion that committee of the whole recommend that council add the topic of the commercial cap to our next intergovernmental call on the Parks Canada.
Right. We have motion on the floor. Is there any debate, any discussion, comments? Great. I'll call it. On the paper. That's carried. All right. We got a nod from Emma that that's captured. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. That brings us to agenda item 7.2. And before we get that, there might be a little bit of a lengthy conversation as well. So I'm all, no. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, yeah, it's gonna be a task. So I'm gonna call a brief break. It is now 10:51. If we can get back here for 11 o'clock to start. Appreciate that. Thank you. Hey, we made it back within the minute of 11 o'clock. So I'd like to call us back to order. Thank you very much, everyone, for your patience and let us have that break. Now that we've finished our conversation on 7.1 S Block parking, we're moving to 7.2 outdoor recreation facilities policy. Director Reed, would you like to start?
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Demota and Deputy Counselor. So the item of course, we have the Recreation Facility Policy and the recommendation is the county committee recommend counsel present policy D14 and municipal field use policy and D15 outdoor skating service policy and adopt the draft outdoor recreational facilities policy. The options, of course, council can recommend our committee can recommend to council to send the policies with amendments or committee can direct administration to update the draft policy with changes suggested today and return to a future committee of the whole meeting with an amended draft policy. So back in August, a committee directed administrative repair and present at a future committee meeting, a draft policy and administrative procedure regarding recreational use of outdoor municipal facilities. Administration took this direction of and have developed a draft policy which would apply to all outdoor facilities on municipal land. And this would be both temporary and permanent or fixed facilities to cover our current and future needs. Administration's understanding of council goal was to expand and clarify the previous policies which were limited to temporary ice surfaces and jet park spaces. I'm sorry we missed that last clarification. This open ended policy would encompass municipally owned and controlled parks and green spaces, sports fields, ice surfaces, playgrounds, sledding hills, bike and skate parks, court courts, et cetera. The municipality recognizes that outdoor recreation plays an important role in building a well-connected, engaged and healthy community. And by ensuring the safety of all our outdoor facilities, the municipality will continue to support residents and visitors in safely participating in outdoor recreational pursuits while limiting liability to the municipality. The relevant legislation that policy would replace policy D014 and policy D015. And the strategic relevance, you can see that it covers the gamut of community health. So promoting and enhancing recreational cultural opportunities slash spaces, enable and facilitate events that provide opportunities to increase community connection, leverage and create opportunities for greater inclusion and recognize the fundamental importance of our tourism economy. This policy would not need any additional budgetary support. The attachments, of course, the draft outdoor recreational facilities policy, as well as links to the two previous policies that we would love to reissue here. And without reciting the policy, it simply says that we will maintain our our outdoor recreation opportunities safely and affordably through the development and maintenance of permanent and or temporary outdoor facilities on municipal property. Then under the definition there, you'll note that we listed everything we know up to date, but we did allow for the future with that little addition of the et cetera. As we change as the municipality, this policy would not have to change. Simply we would add to our administrative procedures. And I'm open to any question.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Much appreciated. I really appreciate the the thought behind this and the time it's put in. Counselor Hall has some comments.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I love this policy because these are rec areas within the town site accessible for all. Lots of our members of the community don't own vehicles and creating and maintaining these spaces I think is really important. In the actual policy, I'm not really sure about the word affordable because it makes it seem, it kind of makes it seem like, you know, how much money people have. And I wonder if accessible would replace that word and still make sense?
If I may, Deputy Mayor Demota through the Council Hall and all council, that's a great addition. And we tried simply to make that amendment today if that was really amended and bring that back to council with that change. Well, I will just jump in to say that accessibility is actually our goal. The word affordable is part of accessibility, but only one aspect of it. So accessible is a much better, I appreciate that change.
I appreciate that. A lot behind that. Within that context, can accessibility mean different things though?
So thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. Absolutely it can. And so accessibility using our equity, diversity and inclusion policy that we have, accessibility and inclusivity. So something like the the outdoor skating opportunities. We would work hard to make those as accessible to all residents and visitors. And so in this case, accessible would include, in this case, free. And it would also include, you know, level ground to approach the surface. So so yes, accessible has a more in-depth meaning. And yes, we would apply that across this spectrum.
Yeah, just, you know, I'm more, I'm concerned in my mind about minimizing, you know, a certain demographic. So if that is to be all inclusive, then that's kind of, if that's acceptable, I don't know, because things change so much on, you know, social more a kind of understandings. Counselor Hall, you mind if I make comment?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yeah, the only I I guess, because what's affordable to one family might not be affordable to another family. So, you know, hockey program or skiing or things out of town are affordable to lots of people, but a skating surface is affordable to that same person, but more affordable to someone else. I just don't want to assume how much money our residents have and what is affordable to them and what's not affordable to the next family.
Thank you for that. Counselor Melnick, would you worship?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota. I appreciate the discussion we just had. It was my note as well. And I I note that of the two policies that we are recommended to revoke, one uses affordability and the other uses accessibility. And I prefer accessibility as well. My only concern is that, and I appreciate that once council passes a motion to adopt policy, the procedures are in the hands of administration. However, with a brand new policy, it would be nice to see the starting point. And I would be more comfortable if I saw the standards first for the policy. So I don't know when the standards will be developed. And I appreciate that the standards are self-edited further. Council would be nevertheless overreaching as I may be, I would kind of like to see where we're going before I go in favor of going. So can you tell me anything about the standards that are being developed or will become part of the procedures with the bylaw?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demota through team of worship and all temple. So absolutely, I think the simplest simplest way to understand is that the existing procedure you would see Simplest way to understand is that um the existing procedure you would see. Um for the um D D fourteen or the the park space is a fairly robust document. Um our procedure involved. So for example, one of the reasons why we we keep that on the administrative side is that so a skating rink. Uh may require daily inspection, a playground may require bi-weekly inspection, and we may up or or. Maybe increase or decrease that based on usage, based on the time of year. Uh and so what we have is um. A very straightforward program where the administration of of all of this, the the procedure side said. Each amenity gets its own um specific procedure. Uh based, certainly based on the minimum regulations, legislation that may apply to each amenity. Uh but also based on our experience, we typically up that, um for example, the the skating surface. Or some of our playgrounds, um depending on the weather, our fields may get inspected twice a day. Um depending on what tournament might be. So so we have each amenity gets its own checklist. That is, you know, based again on legislation, regulation, industry standard, and then it gets uh scheduled. Again, based on those three requirements. And so I we could certainly uh expose counsel to that. Um what we we uh CEO given and I discussed that today, uh whether or not to bring that today. Um making sure that we're on the right track with what council wishes were. And so we did not bring the procedures. As you indicated, they are administrative. And so we felt we wanted to keep you. Uh on the governance side and give you that clarity while you make this level of decision. But um we can certainly uh send that around the panel. As a as a sort of a backup document with without question.
If I may.
Oh yeah, please do.
And I appreciate that. Um yes, um. I and the rest of us have a duty to stay in our lane. And that that's fair. Um. What I'm mostly interested in, I think, is is the wording of. Article three of the proposed policy. And it refers to maintaining facilities in a reasonably safe condition, but it has no wording. About being reasonably accessible. So if we change the word to accessible. That means people can use it. But what we've had in the past, people complaining about closures. But closures are there for a purpose. They're there typically for asset management. So if the field is too wet, sorry, you can't use it. But then residents say, wait, your policy says it has to be accessible. So I would prefer, if I don't see the wording. A change to the wording of the standard section of the policy to say maintain. In a reasonably safe condition and reason with reasonable accessibility. To give you more room to maneuver in your lane.
Uh Deputy Mayor Demota through to uh your worship. Uh that's another great addition. I certainly don't mind that extra clarity. Um with our Carson sports field, uh the existing policy and since we've had for quite some number of years. Uh we have uh the policy. And the procedure do in fact give that clarity, I think, what you're asking for. But the but the sentence that you have suggested. And. So so again, I I would gladly take that as what you would term a friendly amendment. We could add that sentence in for when we bring it back to council. Um I have pulled up the the procedure for the for this policy. And so um just just to, I guess, set your mind at ease for your for your vision. Um so X section one of the policy is regular inspection. And it it is again, the the items that I listed, right, regulation, uh live or um legislation. And industry best practices and our own knowledge of our local area. Um and then section two is if there are deficiencies in the inspection, it describes. What we would do. So in a major case, we would note the deficiency, close the facility, alert the director. Uh and for minor issues, we would quote the facility temporarily, solve the problem as quickly as possible and reopen. So right in the policy, it clearly uh drives us to be open more than than uh closed, so to speak. Um and then a section three simply says that we will have prominent signage, uh warning people up to status. Uh when you do have a closure. So it is like I've I've compressed it just to the bullet points of the headings. But it is exactly what you're uh uh asking for to see at the. Does that help? We could get someone?
I think we're moving in the same direction. Uh and I I appreciate that the reason we want to rescind. Um the existing policy or policies and that includes. D zero one four, which is the municipal field use policy. That's only four years old and. A lot of consideration was given to those words. And so yes, I agreed rescind it to comply. But if you read that policy and the purpose, I think it is quite reflective of the intent. More so, I think, than the policy that's presented to us. So um more of. Those words, um I think would be beneficial. So there, we indicate that we're striving to provide in between sports fields. We can change that wording of the recreational facilities. In a safe condition, we should be compliant with relevant league and sport standards and provide the opportunity. It should comply. Um balancing accessible community and public use and enjoyment with field management best practices. That's a good policy, I think. And and so for the new policy. I would be more comfortable if I had those words. And then I know that we've got the freedom to manage the fields according to best practice. Um and safety considerations. And the purpose part of the field use policy also. Is good. If it wasn't for the fact that we've got two policies, I'm not sure that we would have to change this. The existing one. So I'm just advocating in favor of the wording that I think better expresses the intent and gives administration. A through your hand to to apply best management practices to all of our facilities at all times.
Um your war, our Deputy Mayor Demota through your worship. That that's great. Uh great feedback and and we will make that uh change. And and if council is is understanding, my level of understanding, we can do that for. Uh we look for council meeting or we can bring back the other committee as you may see fit. But but your points are well heard. There's absolutely no reason. You want to add a few more bits of wording in. Without sounding defensive, um your point about giving us capacity to act. And and almost the support of the policy more clearly. That's what I'm hearing. We we certainly on our side saw it almost the other way, where um what we are doing in the procedure. Is described uh clearly and the policy was meant to be that high-level governance. But but all of this wording is entirely workable and we will incorporate it either for council next week or for the committee call.
Right. Um I'm not sure if it's worth it not to take any steam away from anyone. But uh so it doesn't appear that the mayor is directing. Administration that I do see a friendly nod from everybody that they understood and support the mayor's. Comments. I do too. That's okay. Right. I appreciate that, cause words matter. For me, as much as I used to dislike the term closed, I don't know. To what use it in going here, uh you know, when it comes to marketing Jasper on the grand scheme of things, if something does get temporarily. Uh shut down for a while. I I like the term uh temporary restricted use. As opposed to closed, cause you don't want that message to stay out there. It's all, everything's closed, you know, Jasper's not open. That's just uh my angle on things. Because words matter. Counselor Waxer. Uh by the way, I I do you hear for the other viewers out there, Counselor Waxer, do you hear um? Director Reed, quite good. Okay, good. It's quite a distance.
Okay, it is quite a distance. I my only question is uh having spent considerable time talking about uh. Sledding at Snape's Hill. I wondered about the definition of facilities and if they're needed to be. Because um I think youth in particular may be uh creative in creating. Uh new facilities of their own in in when we're talking about outdoors. And I just wanted to be sure that. Um at at this point, we talked about Snape's Hill and it's not going to be considered a municipal facility, but uh. There's, it's still possible that people will use it or um and if we, even if we put a sign up there, there may be other. Areas. I just wondered um if we needed any work on the uh word facilities.
Go ahead.
Uh uh thank you Deputy Mayor Demota through to Counselor Waxer. Um so we specifically said. On that a facility must be on municipal land and operated by the municipality's dashboard. So uh while there are many places that various recreational activities could occur. Uh we would. You know, should there be a problem, a safety issue, then we will take that as a safety issue. Wouldn't really have anything to do with this policy. This policy is only for designated uh uh facilities that we create and or operate. So it it must. Be a designated and and again inspected, safely created and built and maintained safe. So as far as Snake Hill goes, should there be um uh what we might call. Renegade or or rogue tobogganing occurring on Snape's Hill, the safety concerns will be brought to the municipality. Municipality would work to solve the safety concern, but that facility would not be a facility. And would not be part of this policy. We we that's the clarity we put in that definition specifically for that. Um so until we designate Snake Hill as Bogged Hill or Flooding Hill, it is not one. And does not fall under this policy. Safety concerns in general, municipality uh get addressed that safety concern. Does that answer your question, Captain?
Absolutely. That's the reassurance I wanted. Thank you.
Non-sanctioned use of sledding in a community. Are there any other questions, comments, or considerations? Mayor Allen?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. If there are not, see you at events. Um. I will make a motion that committee recommend council rescind policy D zero one four municipal. Field use policy and policy D zero one five outdoor skating surface policy. And adopt the draft outdoor recreation facilities policy with amendments as discussed at committee of the whole. On October eleventh, twenty twenty two.
Alright. Very good. Are there? Thank um. I don't know if my batteries that I hear now, I don't feel like I've been talking a lot. Um it keeps shutting up. Does anybody have anything to debate, discuss, or make comments on? Alright, I'll call the motion then. On paper. Not opposed. That's carried. Alright, so. Maybe this probably would have been a better place to take a break before we go into utilities, but I wanted us to get on a roll. So here we are, going to agenda item seven point three, utility rate model outcomes review. Ms. Malon, Director Malon, would you like to lead the discussion on this, please?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. I can certainly introduce the topic and to say that uh. This came to the September twenty seventh committee of the whole meeting. And uh the direction that was provided by council at the time is reflected under the background in the report. And uh Ms. Mallenchat has been doing some more work on this item and she will be reading you through it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um if you bear with me for two seconds, my um computer crashed, of course. Two seconds, thank you.
I saw that you were busy there and um Christine was looking at me, so that's why I. Went to her first and maybe we could take a couple of minutes here. Well, I had a dad joke was over the weekend from Thanksgiving. Uh since I started that. Uh someone asked me, how do farmers listen to rap music? They like to turn up the beats. Anyway, it's a little bit of a, I don't even have kids, but you know, I've got a lot of uh young friends that uh. Are uh my friends' kids and and uh visas in Matthews. Yeah, I was just bailed out and she was laughing too hard. Anyway, it's it's harvest time. It's appropriate for Thanksgiving, another thing. Okay. Uh Ms. Mallencheck.
Thank you for the time and uh the joke. In the meantime, um I don't know why, it seems. I always crash right before I have to go on. Um but yes, so we're bringing back the utility rate model um outcome review. Uh as presented at the twenty seventh of September meeting, two motions were made and uh one of the motions being that um. Uh it was directed to administration to present alternative alternatives to uh to the calculations charged. For church properties within the east uh the CCC model um and to achieve greater equity. Um therefore, just to highlight a few extra things within the the report. Um. There was a typo that was alluded to um by Counselor Melnick. And it has been changed and updated within the report. So yes, after sixty-six percent of the year. Um seventy-five percent of the forecasted budget revenue has been brought in by the CCC model. Um so this was anticipated just because of the additional use during uh summer monks with. Usage from the additional tourism as well as um from people watering their gardens and their lawns and whatnot. So. Um at the thirty-three percent and the fifty percent, the model was actually bang on thirty-three, thirty-three percent and fifty percent. Of the projected bu- budget. So this this was completely um projected. Another thing what that was brought up by Counselor Wall was a question about the changes in the capital and connection revenue. And why they had changed. And my answer was um about bringing on additional um properties. Now um that then you seen a bigger change, a lot bigger in May and June. And uh that was, there was supposed to be an adjustment made and it actually hadn't happened at the point, but it's happened now. Um but there still is a bigger jump there. And what it is, is bringing on some properties that are on the um south side of. The muse from the municipalities. So um bringing on those meters because they they don't operate in the winter. So that's what you've seen the increase and then um they'll likely go down again when they go off season. Um. And. To talk about the equity that was brought up by um. Uh his worship. If I did um analysis of twenty twenty one versus twenty twenty two. And um in twenty twenty one, if you notice on, I think it's page twenty-five of the the agenda. There's some charts that represent the numbers that I'm going to speak to here. In twenty twenty one. The previous model residents uh property, residential properties accounted for approximately forty-one percent of the consumption. The previous model residence property residential properties accounted for approximately forty one percent of the consumption. While they only contributed thirty percent of the fees. Um so this indicates that the residential properties were being were under contributing. In twenty twenty two, with a new model, resident users. Again, are responsible for about the same amount of usage, so thirty eight percent. But now they are contributing about thirty five percent of um the levies. So it's gone up. It's not exact, but. Um it's a lot closer than it was. So this has increased the level of equity that we've seen from. Residential to and commercial properties, the difference between them. And then we also spoke about um church properties at the last meeting and I. We just wanted to clarify that it it is just to one property that this um oddity occurred and it kind of got reflected. Um we did some additional work to look into why this property might um be higher than others. Now, this church has two meters. All the other ones have one meter only. Um these meters are five eighths of an inch as well as two inches. Um this church has a residence on the property as well as a rentable space, which is quite large. And the consumption is much, much greater than the other five churches being um they were using a hundred and. A hundred and seventeen cubic meters in July and August versus to all others combined using hundred and twenty three cubic meters. So they ranged, all of the other churches ranged from eight to fifty six cubic meters in their uses during those two months. So um that's something to note as well. So as um. As we're speaking about this, it does reflect that the model is being correctly applied to the property. Um administration would recommend against making uh special considerations um as. Um it would likely need to other properties or property types requesting special treatments or conditions as well. Um overall, the CCC model has been working correctly. Um and on par with its projections and generating the required revenue that was forecasted. And that is it for the um report and we can definitely bring more reports down um. In the future as to the outcomes with the change of the seasons as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that. Counselors. Yes, Melnick.
Thank you for the report. Appreciate that, Ms Malin Chat. Um I want to refer to page twenty nine. And specifically to the one point five inch category in both. Connection and capital seems to only capture a small amount of. Of revenues there and I'm wondering um. If we might be. Able to make a move to that middle category to go to be one point five to two. Which would then take some users from the above one point five. And put them into the one point five to two category. And then you would have two and above. Or above two inches as this as this apply line. And the rea- the reason I mention that is. In the way this is being presented, I can't see if the capital component. Is are we overcharging the capital according to budget or undercharging? Um because I I sense that we're going to be over budget. And it'll probably be by consumption, uh unless we maybe overcharge some users based on their pipe size. And and I see us having an opportunity to do the exercise of seeing how that would affect some users. Um currently, we're at two point nine million dollars. Of water sewer combined revenue. And um I just did a very simple extrapolation by taking. The January, February, and March, April bills and pretended those to be the last two quarters. And I show that we'll be up to, we could be a quarter million dollars over budget. By adding those two billing periods to the existing core. Which might mean we may be overcharging in that capital category. It it would be worth the exercise to make sure that that's not the case. So I think that was part of the biggest discussion about. Um why bills went up so much for some users? Um I don't know if that exercise has been done, but um. Uh the other reason we could end up being over that much is people are just using that much more water. And you know, our our fees are 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 such that if you use more, you're going to pay more.
I appreciate your math and you know what? I was I was trying to figure out myself. On you know where we're at and the the seventy five versus thirty three ratio. And in my mind, I think about springtime and even though we have usual, you know, in the in the in the early. Year, um people are also when the snow's melting watering things and flowers and grass and all sorts of stuff, including. You know, our own grounds, but uh so at the risk of changing things up like we did with parking and and. It might be worth our while to see this whole thing through and see where we're at again. Um my question, I guess, through to administration. Would it be an extremely arduous task that if we did overcharge, that we could offer some rebates or some. Uh relief for people or uh you know that were affected in those categories? I like where Councilor Melnick's going.
I guess I I agree this uh we can look at the um. Um the two inch greater than two inch prospect and see. Um however, I do also want to see how it will. Um pan out for the year and if our calculations will work out appropriate. Um now I do see it uh being high. There'll be some come offline, not many, but there will be some. Um and yes, being being that said, um the next uh conversation to have is reserves on. The um on the policy. So there there are alternatives as to what can be done with the the amount of money if it does. Or does if it does end up calculating or retrieving more money than we had projected. It could potentially offset um fees for the next year. Um it could uh. It it's it's entirely council's decision. Um if we have um a a. There could be a reserve set up as contingency for other things, um but there there is that option to. Then take that money set aside for future um and it can be applied towards the next year for sure. Um so those discussions would then, if if the policy uh moves forward and was changed, then. My intention is then to bring back every year before going into um year end. About what we can do with any kind of surpluses and 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 in looking at the reserve policy going forward. But yes, we would definitely be uh not just applying it to an overall surplus. We can look at other alternatives.
Yeah, go ahead. Thank you very much for that. And I just want to make it clear that my estimate.
Is is strictly an estimate using existing numbers. There's no real basis for it. I don't know what consumption's going to be like. I'm making some huge assumptions there, so. I don't want the public to all of a sudden think. Wow, they've overcharged and they're a quarter million dollars someplace. It could be that they are, we're only fifty thousand or. Whatever over and and that's really a small insignificant amount, but I'm just speculating that. That we may have an opportunity to apply if we have overcharged um. That to either capital reserves or or um to prevent a greater increase in the volume budget here.
Yeah, that's two. I I want to be clear. I'm glad you said that. Um you know, I didn't. I hope it didn't come across that I'm being flippant because um to you know. Uh compare this to paid parking because I know it has a greater impact on our residents and and. Um as we've seen, take the the burden um on much of this. So um. I I was just saying in comparison, even though like this isn't a pilot project. But seeing as that this will be our first year, uh we are reviewing it, uh like we said we would. And I think it would be prudent to see how the metrics work with the system and where we are uh come, you know. December thirty first. And once we get there, I mean, that'll give us a really good idea and maybe. Think about what Counselor Melnick is proposing or maybe some other tweaks to make this as good as it can for Jasper. Because I I like the way it's going and um you know, I know it's not well received because it's new and anything you do, it's it's going to come back with a little bit of pushback. Hopefully, we can take some of the 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 pushback and and look at where our capital costs are and and make things work as best as it can for the community. Counselor Hall, you have your hand.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. I just have a couple of questions. The church in question, the residence on that property is included in that bill? Yes, correct. Okay. And then also. We last last week, we learned that like what I voted for was an average of between forty and fifty dollars a month increase for the resident, which I thought was very fair. And we're kind of right on that mark. We still get the emails every now and then. I'm sure administration still get email the resident who is experiencing some unusually high bill. How are you guys dealing with that? And are you the right place for us to direct residents who still have those concerns that are asking us? You know, on the street or in our inbox.
Thank you, uh Counselor. Um sorry, Deputy Mayor through to Counselor Wall. Um yes, of course, we can always answer questions and look into um oddities. Um there might even be something that was off for that month and or two months and we we want to analyze that as well. You know, if there's leaks that occurred or whatnot. So yes, definitely tell anybody to contact the office and we can look into the situation. If it's different from the um especially the last two um months billing. Um and it's sorry, I believe there was another part to that question. No, that is everything.
Thank you, Counselor Hall. May I refer to Councilor Boxer first? Your next, Mr. New?
Uh I just wanted to express appreciation for the clarity on the church property. Um uh I was left feeling a little bit uncomfortable last week, but um that the. Explanation is is clear and leaves me comfortable with that uh going forward.
Thank you, Councilor Boxer. Your worship.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Demota. I am more concerned and suspect of my own math than Counselor Melnick did. Nevertheless, I I did a bunch. So I will try and start this out with. We have had concerns raised by both um the commercial sector and the residential sector. With respect to increased costs. And in part, it's it's all blamed on the model, but it seems to me that. Um two thirds of the way through the year, um we have collected. Like you said, seventy five percent of the anticipated revenue. And it appears to me that. The extra revenue that we have collected so far is about seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Over last year. Which means that we're going to collect. A million dollars more this year than last year. Is that is that anywhere close to accurate? And I I say that just looking at at the numbers last year, if the total combined. Well, it's I guess it's closer to eight hundred thousand. It goes from two point one to two point nine, is that? That's where we're at. That's the seven hundred and fifty thousand that we've collected so far.
Deputy Mayor through to your worship. Um so there is also, if you're comparing to twenty twenty one. Um there was an increase in the the um budget alone of eight hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. In the water and sanitary. Um levy itself, it increased from, it increased five hundred and seventy two thousand. So um. Yes, it has increased. You'll see those those fluctuations, but the levies themselves did increase in them mainly due to the additional. Amounts being contrib- contrib- contributed to the reserves for the infrastructure. Um being that we need to focus a little bit more attention on our asset management of those of those systems. Um. This, I must say, is a very complex uh calculation that took us. Many, many tries to get. And I feel very confident so far in what I've seen, being that at thirty three percent of the year. At fifty percent of the year, they were completely bang on. The only reason we were over was because of consumption in the in the next billing period. So and you can definitely be certain that 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 consumption will go down compared. For the next few months, especially November when we get really slow. Um I can't say. For sure that it's going to be a perfect model. I do think that there could be room for improvement. Um. But I do feel that we need to see how it it will work out and we can um. We can work with things in the future if if that should be the case, but at the moment, I would I'm very, very certain in how things have been working out.
Thank you. I I appreciate that. Appreciate that level of confidence. Uh as you know, my concern is one of equity. So when I try and compare these numbers. If I use the twenty twenty one numbers, um it indicates that. Residential consumption was forty one percent of residential contribution was thirty percent. And the numbers have changed, right? So total combined revenue. In twenty twenty one was two point one seven six million. Um for twenty twenty two, it was two point nine. If I took thirty percent, so last year's contribution by residents and applied it to this year's number. Um thirty percent of that two point nine would be eight hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars. It's gone out. Like that, it's a two hundred thousand dollar increase, which is about twenty five percent of what residents had been paying. So they got a twenty five percent increase. Whereas in my calculations, the commercial sector got about an eight percent increase. So is that the equity that we intended? It's only a question I, it's a question more for council than for anybody else, but I, as I say, my math is suspect, but that's the way I did it. Um. And then the que- the second question is the. The indication is that because residents were consuming. Forty one percent of this year, it's thirty eight percent of volume. That should be reflected in their contribution. However, did we not apply a tiered rate? And doesn't the tiered rate suggest that? Volume of consumption is not the factor that is most important. If if consumption alone was the guiding principle. Then we wouldn't have been encouraged, it seems to me, to apply a tiered rate. And. Those who are playing game with tiered rate are complaining because they say a a unit is a unit is a unit. It doesn't cost. More just because I take more units. They may have a point. Um but we did apply a tiered rate on the basis I thought that those heavy users put more strain on the system. And so if the residents are not using the volume overall, why would we have. A tiered rate and why would we use consumption as the basis to decide whether or not we had achieved equity in the system? And it's not just equity between user groups, commercial and residential. Seems to me there's still an outstanding question of equity within user groups. So we continue to have the issue. That was brought forward earlier. Early when we adopted the the model of differential treatment between commercial users. Roughly of the same category, but with different sized pipes. And it may still be defensible, but I think we have to show why it is defensible. And I still struggle on the residential side with equity among residential uners users, so. I don't know what side of the line goes into an apartment building with sixty units, um. But are they paying proportionally, anything close to what a residential? Standalone property is paying, I I have just lost how we calculate that degree of. Equity within the system, so I, and I I won't go back to to refight that battle, but I. I had suggested there might be other ways to apportion the capital. And connection fee based on say number of outlets you have in your property, the number of bathrooms or something, that seemed far too complex. And I accept that, but I would still like some measure of equity of. Among categories rather than just between categories and. It's a challenge, I I think for all of us, I don't throw this all on the administration, but I am still. Working to say that we have achieved equity, but I will say that the fact that we're. Collecting a whole lot more money um to keep the system viable and sustainable. Probably makes the greatest difference. We are charging more because we recognize that we need more to make the system sustainable and. More is more, no matter what side of the equation you're on. It it's it's not pleasant to have an increased bill, but we can explain why, but I still look for. For a defense of of equity um in what we have done. And given all of that, um. And I won't make the motion yet, but I'd throw it out for council consideration. This has been. A uniquely difficult experience for successive councils, and I know that in. A long ago, was it? In preparation for the twenty twenty budget, I think we. Twenty twenty-one budget, we tried to pass. Uh, a bylaw on December fifteenth of twenty twenty. That was previous council and. We delayed it all because we couldn't sort out this particular bylaw and last council struggled to the end of its term. To come to grips with this, current council accepted. Um, benefit of all the work that administration have done previously and in February of this year. Adopted a model, but even then, with this review prominent in mind, but back after four billing cycles. And it continues um to be monumentally difficult, so simply having raised the revenue that we projected. Um, that's good, but it doesn't mean that we've done it in an equitable way, and so at the end of all of this, I. I'm inclined to suggest that this council engage in a workshop and see whether we can. Um, with only one matter on the agenda, that being this bylaw, see whether we can come to grips with. The equity question and councillor Melnick might be right, maybe we could do greater equity if we reconfigured. The pipe size, maybe we should look again at tiered rates, I'm not sure it's it's a huge challenge. But it continues to leave me uncomfortable because it continues to be really difficult to explain. To taxpayers, whether they're residential taxpayers or non-residential taxpayers.
Good points, your worship. Um, and I do, I do remember uh some of the debate around the tiers and someone had commented. The fact that, well, maybe if uh customers consume more. Uh, they should get uh less of a rate with the more that they consume, but I think we're trying to. We were trying to promote conservation and that will be um the opposite of what we're trying to achieve, so. Um, that was quite a difficult conversation to have, and I think that tiered models basically. To support that, right, I'm correct? Now, if I go back to to your comments, your worship on um equity. I'm just trying to wrap around my my head around, let's say I have a residence. Um, just say three bedroom house next to a twenty room apartment. We both only have one connection and it's the same size connection. Do our fees right now, are are those two things the same, the the capital and the connection? These for those two types of scenarios, is that what the mayor's trying to hire now as far as equity goes in those things?
Deputy Mayor, um, so it does depend on the size and generally the sizing it higher if you have an apartment building versus a house. The house is that is usually a five eighths versus an apartment building and what has the service. Um, I think that a lot of useful. Or thoughts have been put into this and I I too have written down some stuff, um and some more, you know. Work to be done on analyzing a bit more on on, for instance, that scenario of a house versus an apartment building. And how many people are using that service and and what is being paid? Um, so, uh, yes, they would pay the same connection and capital fee if they were the same. But they were not, um, they will not be the same for for that size of property. They will be more um for a larger building because they need a larger meter, so. But yes, definitely some uh thoughts have come up on how we can analyze further on the equity portion of within. Um, categories not. I against another category, so yes, I I I see that 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 being a valid study.
Yeah, thank you, and and you know, I was trying to dumb it down for myself, but for other people that might be, you know, caught up in the in the quack, admire this and. Um, you know, and I appreciate that, and eventually this might have to be, as we grow, might have to get onto into. Drilling down into individual situations when it comes down to what size of residence or whatever it is. Because maybe someone's got, uh, you know, a six bedroom house and. And and comparing that to a two bedroom one or whatever it is, I mean, I'm just using those as examples, so, I mean. Eventually those things will will start to correct the system a little better if the desire is there to go that deep. And if need be, then you know, that's what we have to do to make it equitable. Um, again, I I'd like to see this thing go out and as much as that might pain uh some people that hear, um. That might be the best process, until we see the end result, we we can make better decisions in the future. Councillor Melon? Councillor Hall? Your worship, you still uh putting together a motion, does someone?
I I am prepared to make a motion, um first that committee received the report for information. And that. Committee direct administration to organize and prepare for a workshop for council and key staff. For further discussion of the utility rate by law. Speaking to that motion that referred from our director of finance and administration. That I think that. Based on today's discussion, there are some further. Details that she could try and flush out and comparisons to be made within categories in particular. And so at that degree of preparation could be done in advance and come to a workshop, there still might be more that comes out of the workshop, but. I think that in speaking to the motion, the nature of the decision. We are asked to make is of such significance to the community that it warrants. This particular council engaging in a way that it has yet to have had the opportunity to do. So, not proposing a workshop, whenever um it becomes. Convenient, given that we're going into budget as well, but it versus impacts budget, but it's status quo until we change it.
I feel that's a prudent approach. Does anyone have any comments or? Thoughts to the debate? So everyone understand the motion, administration, we captured that, all right, I'll call it a question, on paper. That rules. That's care. Thank you again councillor Boxer. All right, uh, okay, so gone for another hour here, um. As the days get longer, at first, as the day gets longer, the days are getting shorter. As far as daylight goes, um, we're into the noon. Hour of meeting, we still have a few agenda items to go, I think that we could probably finish them off. Um, before we go for lunch, our reserve policy, and then I'm not sure if we'll get to seven point five today, we might have to return. To that when councillor Wilson is available, so, um, if everyone's okay, I would like to take a quick break for five minutes. And then come back and finish off the agenda. Very nice, okay, let's do this quickly. Can I? It is now twelve, um, I'd like to bring us back to committee of the whole. We are now on agenda item seven point four. Reserve policy, can we go directly to you, Ms. Malincheck?
Yes, please, thank you, um, so today administration is bringing forward a recommendation to co- to committee. Um, to receive the draft reserve policy B one one two as presented. And direct administration to return to a future committee with a whole of the whole with um schedule A reserve descriptions. Um, and there are all, there are always alternatives, um, that committee recommend council approve the reserve policy with the following. Amendment amendments, um, and that committee direct administration to re- revise the reserve policy. Uh, based on the discussions that were had held today. Um, so just to give a little bit more background, um, for those that may have not had a chance to read over the entire document. Um, currently we have policy B zero twelve, it's the existing debt reserve limits policy. Debt slash revert reserves limit policy, and was adopted September seventh, twenty ten. Um, we are gonna try to focus that on this policy as being reserves only. Uh, debt limits should be separate and written in context of its own policy at a later date. Um, with B zero twelve, um, we're refocusing to speak separately to reserves solely. And separate policy to the debt li- uh limits just because of them being quite uh different, yes, they're used in for the same nature, but. Um, very different in in uh what they, how they should be written, um. Um, at a high level, the draft reserve policy is intended to provide a forum for council. Um, to describe its expectations, ensure that the municipal municipal money is well managed and controlled. And spent only as approved by council. Additionally, the policy sets the standard of reporting uh that council wishes to see in an accurate and timely fashion. Um, it must be noted that Alberta municipalities have several legislative purposes. Um, we must provide service facilities and other things that in the opinion of council are necessary or desirable for the municipality. Um, so therefore, there is uh many, many things to purchase, construct, um, operate. And maintain, uh, that is a a big part of uh the whole process with reserves. It's maintaining the infrastructure that we have currently as well, as we just spoke about as well with the um utility. Um, CCC model. In the past, a lot, um, there hasn't been as much focus on asset management, but it's coming to a point where it's needed. Um, and you know, when we're talking about the infrastructure that we might have, we might have small uh pieces of equipment. To multimillion dollar assets, um, so there are multiple ways um of paying for these assets. And of it to be a few would be debt revenue generated or setting aside a portion of your revenue to save for larger um projects. Um, so the most common and viewed as a um. Best practice is to gradually set aside a small portion, um, so that you can focus on new infrastructure. As well as replacement of the current infrastructure. This is because municipalities have limited revenue sources, primarily taxes, user fees or levies. And grants provided by other levels of government. And we also have a limited avail avail, uh, sorry, ability to take out debt on large scale projects. As you know, that um municipalities are limited to accumulating debt in the amount of one point five times their prior year revenue. Um, this approach minimizes the use of financing, which then allows municipalities to stay within debt limits. And ultimately saves municipality taxpayer money by reducing interest costs. Um, reserves or restricted surplus again is a best practice. And is a responsible and proactive approach. Reserve funds should not be perceived as a measure of the municipality's wealth. As it may be a product of many years of saving and advanced planning to fund projects identified in the municipality's long range capital plan. Uh, the MGA does not specify any requirements or restrictions related to accumulating or managing reserves. However, many uh councils will set aside a uh portion of their revenues for into these reserves. As uh they see fit. And uh they are also within policy established reserves are funded and. They're established on how reserves are funded and also how the withdrawals of will occur on those reserves. All of that occurs generally through the budget process. So again, reserves are an effective tool to support municipal planning um and asset management. Uh, it's really important that we're thinking about assets throughout their entire life cycle. And rather than making sudden financial decisions supported by borrowing, reserves require municipalities to think ahead and consider. When a certain asset may need to be replaced, expanded or built for the first time to meet an um emergence emerging service need. An important aspect of asset management is making the long-term budgeting decisions. With service levels and asset deterioration in mind, not preparing for the inevitable repair or replacement of the deteriorating assets. Through the use of reserves could lead to a crisis situation, leaving limited funds available. And forcing uh to borrow heavily or increase taxes and significantly or also significantly reducing. Um, service levels as an alternative motion motive. Um, I must say that uh the biggest thing in. Um, reserves is that ignoring municipal expenses or liabilities only tells one story. For financial financial planning, reserves are an indication of council's commitment to ensuring a healthy community with a plan for a bright future. In other words, reserves should not be viewed as that wealth for the municipality, but rather the opposite. The money is essentially already spent and is restricted for specific use and future use. The reserves can also accumulate interest part of being used, which it has not been a practice as um as of late. Um, so that is also written up into the policy itself. And that is um the beginning of uh our discussions surrounding. surrounding the reserves policy. As you can see, attached are the current debt reserve policy, which we would like to rescind. They are quite um um small in nature, so you can um go past those quite quickly and into the new reserve policy. Where we talk about the policy statement, the purpose, the guiding principles. Uh, the financial reporting that would be provided um being that we would um report twice, at a minimum at twice annually as well as uh with the consolidated financial statements. The responsibility of council, the C A O, as well as for the director of admin finance administration and some definitions to to review. And that is it. And I open now to counsel. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Malincheck. Counselors, with the information you have in front of you and presented, are there any questions that you might have? Okay, while we're waiting, uh, the mayor would like to speak.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demoda. I appreciate um the new policy. Imagine an old policy being made. Yes, um, so I I I like um how this is structured and where it's going, but I do have some questions about the draft reserve policy. In the policy statement itself, the fourth bullet is to enable property tax and utility levy stabilization. So that would be, I take it, a new reserve, but we would anticipate seeing a description of that reserve in schedule A, and so we wouldn't be approving this policy until after we get schedule, is that fair?
Uh, yes, that is completely correct. It would be a new and you would be seeing the schedule prior to approving the full policy. Uh, there's lots of newness with that will come within the schedule as well.
Okay, so I I just want to confirm, we had a similar discussion earlier today about procedures versus policy. But the schedule will be in fact part of the policy, not part of the procedures. Is that right? So it is within our lane.
Um, yes, um, because council um ultimately is the um body which sets the the reserve and what it'll be used for, the amounts that will be going in within the budget. Um, and um yes, I I do believe it would be part of the policy, not the administrative procedures, just because it is um how council would like to see that those funds used in the future being for whether it's infrastructure or um lead for, as mentioned before, the the um stabilization, whatnot.
Good. Thank you for that. I'm gonna continue. Just a few other observations. Um, under definitions, um, the first one, financial reserve, although that might be a description, I just don't find that it it is a definition. All the definitions typically say means something that is a hammer is an effective tool for banging the nail, but it doesn't really define a hammer. I don't know whether we even need it at all. There is, under capital reserves, the word unrestricted net assets, and I know that we have in the past talked about restricted and unrestricted reserves. Is there any intent to have any unrestricted reserves? And if so, then seems to me that we need a definition for what unrestricted reserve means. Because the definition section now is lacking, but the only place I find unrestricted is in that definition of capital reserve. So I don't know what the answer is, but if we're gonna use that word and there's a meaning, then I think we should find it. A smaller item under restricted as a definition means a reserve operating or capital of money that can only be used for specific purposes. I think each reserve is a a specific purpose, and so I think that it wouldn't be for specific purposes, plural, but just a specific purpose. So each reserve is restricted to some purpose, unless, of course, it's unrestricted, but she hasn't defined. And again, the definition of reserves, um, it starts with are created when I think that a definition should be written that reserves means a fund set aside designated for future purposes rather than are created. And the final question I have is with respect to reserves under the existing administrative procedures for bylaws zero one two. We have a reserve minimum of two million dollars. Is it intended? Um, we rescind that bylaw. That was intended to replace it. Was it necessary to replace it or will it just be silent?
Deputy Mayor, three two, your worship. Um, yes, so that um minimum amount will be seen in the schedule provided. So definitions of the reserves themselves as well as minimal um optimal balances that we would that council would like to see within those reserves.
Thank you for that. I I will only then suggest that there be some wording to reflect what that minimum reserve amount means. Because I I struggle personally with a minimum, we always have to have a minimum of two million dollars. That means that we couldn't dip into that two million dollars. It's it's supposed to be there as a as a hedge against disaster of some sort, financial disaster. But if you have to have a minimum, then you can't use that minimum potentially ever. And so what's the point of having a minimum if you can't use it? So I I I think we should sort out what we mean. We've always thought that, yes, we should always have a savings account. But if the savings account always has to have a minimum balance, then you can't ever go below that. So that first two million can never use. I I'd like to see us take a shot at expressing what what it is we really mean. And it's good to have the savings account. But it's of no value if we can never dip into it.
Yeah, I get it. I guess what you're saying, I get what you're saying. Because when you get to two million, that's actually zero for us as far as our savings goes, because we're required to have that. And so we, but we have nothing to dip into. So essentially, we don't have a reserve there.
We have savings accounts.
That's right. I don't want to get too deep into specifics and into different departments or anything, but I remember uh prior to even being in this building, the uh council, the time we discussed uh fleet management and reserves for that, and because of the dynamics, we talked about, uh, you made reference to to assets and some of them being small, some of them being big, and then um, there was differentiation to fleet because of the complexities there where in vehicles and and all sorts of things. And then we went into the discussions about whether it's better to rent in some areas or lease and and buy straight up. So that that dynamic in itself, I I think we were developing a system at the time to take care of all that. Um, has there any been any more thought into um having a fleet reserve for the municipality in general as opposed to different departments?
Um, yes, Deputy Mayor, um, there is going or the plan is to bring forward a reserve for fleet. Um, now um, as it would be seen, would be an entire fleet, but I for job costing wise and what is necessary for each department, there there is a very important part of, you know, uh, one department not um not contributing too much and then having another department um pull all of the the reserves that was contributed by a different department. So just in the aspect of keeping it in alignment with what um you require for that department. Um, in the fleet nature, for instance, administration doesn't really need much in the fleet sense, but um, operate or operations and um and protective services do. So it it only makes more, it makes sense for them to contribute more to that reserve than, say, administration would, um, because they will need more. Um, and having it, it will in essence, go to one great big pot, but in the background, there'll still be for for me as as the budgeting and planning um going into looking into the future, that would be still segregated out and planned for.
Thank you. And you know, it wasn't my intent to get into more of a budgetary discussion, but I just, I didn't know if certain things need to be addressed within the reserve policy was, you know, it we're not intending to get into the specifics of those, but there are some dynamics of our overall operation that are different from ours.
Right, and the schedule will um restrict the reserves more so um in in their use and how they're they're um fed basically as well.
Alright, thank you. Counselors, Councilor.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demoda. Um, I going back to your reference to schedule eight. Um, do you have a feel for how many reserves we might be looking at? Are we looking at a list of about twenty or eighteen? And and I appreciate your comments, especially around the fleet discussion where uh protective services and specifically the replacement of fire trucks need to be done on a scheduled basis. Legislatively, we need to make sure that funds are timed to when trucks have to be replaced. So hence probably a restricted reserve, but uh just to to help us, as I see the five, six points here, how reserves are going to be defined. Um, I I'm anticipating between all the different departments that would be looking at, like I said, probably fifteen different reserves, named reserves.
Um, once again, my uh Deputy Mayor, three two, Counselor Melnick, um, my computer VPN is crashed, so I can't bring up the document I was trying to bring up to give you a specified amount, but um definitely probably in the fifteen to twenty five, um, being that we're, we will be focusing more on asset groups as well. Um, on the back end of things, I will see a lot more of those when it comes down to budgeting and planning. Um, but yes, probably in that fifteen to twenty five range. Um, I do have a start on it and it, but I I can't open it at the moment, sorry.
Thank you, you too. If uh we have no further questions, would someone other than the mayor like to make a motion today? Other, I know you made one. I made the reference to quarterback here, and if I had to remove myself, make a motion, uh, the the Englishman chair for a bit, I will, but uh we have three other very capable counselors. Does anyone want to take a stab at this? There's some blowing through here. Alright.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, I can take a stab at making this motion. That committee received the draft reserve reserve policy as presented and as amended with comments you've heard in our discussion. Is that good? With amendments as discussed at the committee of the whole October eleventh, twenty twenty two.
Thank you, everyone.
I like the ever evolving motions. Works great. Ms. Acorn, did you uh get that?
I I will continue on and direct administration to return to a future committee of the whole with schedule A reserve descriptions as discussed at committee of the whole October one twenty two.
Alright, so that's an all encompassing motion with the two points and the amendments direction. Everyone understand? All in favor? That's Carrie. I did pause Captain. Okay, uh, any more discussions on a reserve policy, any comments before we move on to potentially agenda item eight? I don't believe, but is any, is Counselor Wilson asked anybody to discuss the clean energy program? Do you have some information on that? Ms. Adam?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Demoda. I do not have information from Counselor Wilson, but um, Ms. Robbins, who was here earlier today, said she had some information uh that she could forward us on email about the program and that um it is for businesses to apply to. So we can um be sure to forward that to council, and Counselor Wilson may choose to raise this again at an upcoming meeting, but that's what I want to share.
Counselor Hall.
Yes, I I did hear from Counselor Wilson that he he's happy to have it deferred to the next committee of the whole, maybe with that information.
Thank you, Director Nadel. Thank you, Counselor Hall. Um, having, was that your hand? Your worship. Uh, having no further discussion on that, I'd like to move on to agenda item eight, the motion action list. Ms. Adam, do you have anything to change here or?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. I would suggest that the longest standing item on the motion action list can be struck out and and replaced by the new direction that uh council provided today. So that first item uh dated September fourteenth, twenty twenty one, S block to be removed as well as um the recreational use of municipal outdoor facilities. Um, again, new direction arising from council today, but that this August ninth, twenty twenty two item can be struck out. And I believe that does it unless the the last one would be utility model review outcomes. Maybe again to strike out and replace with the new motions from today would be the third one, which is the last item on the motion action list.
Great. And just for clarification, um, having those changes, we will see S block parking come back on here with a different uh motion description and a different target date. And those target dates are to be recommended on what administration feels that they can accomplish to apply. Okay. That's great. So when we have a motion regarding S block parking, the removal of S block parking, the outdoor recreation facilities policy, and the third one was the utility rate models outcome. Correct?
Yes. If I if I may, so the motion would be to um approve the motion action list with the amendments as presented.
Yeah, I'm waiting for someone to do that. Counselor Waxer. Alright.
Sorry, do you need me to say it or is it?
That's alright. No, I don't. I just like to hear your voice. So there we go. You can hear us. We can hear you. Um, I'll call the question. Alan Peter. That's Carrie. Thank you for that. So thanks for having me here. Alright, that brings us on to uh counselor upcoming meetings. Who would like to report first? Counselor appointments to boards and committees. Your worship. Your worship.
I have um, two matters Deputy Mayor Demota. Thursday of this week is a meeting of the West Yalvin Regional Waste Management Authority Board. Councillor Wilson and I sit on that. I am, I'm going to be unable to attend. Typically, these meetings are on Wednesdays, which is it works with my schedule. This Thursday does not, I'm not sure whether we have an alternate designated for that particular committee. Um, and I don't seem to have access to the internet right now, so I can't check the appointment schedule that's embedded in our, again, there is no alternative. But I will, I will try and confirm with councillor Wilson that he at least will be there. Uh, Mr. Given often attends as well, but he's away this week, but he might designate somebody. The second thing I would like to draw to council's attention in terms of upcoming meetings, of course, we have the organizational meeting, um, two weeks from today, following committee of the whole. There may be um, a desire at that meeting to add two new assignments. I have discussed with Mr. Given, and I'm not sure whether we received it yet, but we're anticipating at least an invitation from Parks Canada to appoint a councillor to the Indigenous Forum. Um, so we, if we're going to do that, we should regularize it with a motion, uh, the organizational meeting. And then I can make the appointment, so if somebody can come prepared with a motion to add the Indigenous Forum as a, with Jasper National Park Indigenous Forum, and similarly with whatever councillor Melnick discussed early on this morning, the rural renewal initiative stream, I think, that will run making appointment. There is necessity of having a motion at the organizational meeting to add that committee to our structure. Um, so I will invite any councillor to be prepared for that, and if there are any other committees or boards where councillors think we should have representation, then I invite councillors to come to the organizational meeting, prepared to make a motion to add other appointments to the list. And if you wanted an email, you can send an email.
Like these internal love jazz. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate that. I'm uh, I'll be, it looks like the other councillors are formulating some things. I'm uh, on behalf of our councillor, councillor at the um, uh, attending the community conversations. Tomorrow is an alternate uh, for early childhood, or early learning childhood. Uh, take care, so, childcare. And I do believe that in oh, okay, that's fine. I'll defer to the council. Councillor Hall? Uh, we'd just like to report that I attended the community conversations, um, for seniors last Wednesday as the alternate, and um, was a very productive meeting, well attended, and uh, there is uh, I think some good um, positive uh, communication going on through these, through our various community conversations, and just would encourage individuals to participate and, and monitor, to participate in anyone that they have any interest in. Um, it certainly is, has been great to uh, to be involved in them, and I look forward to continuing through the next year on whichever community conversations we determine councillors will be on at the organizational meeting. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hall. Councillor Hall? Councillor Hall?
Thank you Deputy Mayor. Last Wednesday, I also attended a community conversation, the adult one, and unfortunately brought the wrong book with my notes, but it was very well attended, probably twenty people, it was really your best conversation that we actually had to cut short because we got to the hour mark, but I do remember that, the Clinton Center is happy, there are less jobs on the board and there are more international staff coming back into town, which is a huge help, so. I also do share your sentiments, councillor Melnick, I really enjoy those conversations.
Councillor Waxer?
Uh, last Friday, I attended food security working group and uh, administration from the uh, community development department has developed a draft presentation based on the feedback from participation, or from the participants in this uh, working group. And uh, it has been distributed and so quite a bit of uh, work was done on, by the group. It now goes back to the group's membership to come forward to council, uh, believe at the end of the month. So uh, it's, it's been a, a pleasure to be working with this group and uh, it's wonderful to see the passion and enthusiasm of people who, um, in the community who have been addressing food security for our residents.
Thank you councillor Waxer. Any other councillors? All right. That loses to uh, agenda item ten, upcoming events. We've got the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce General Meeting on October twelfth via Zoom uh, at eight thirty AM. Is that strictly to Zoom, or is that a Zoom option? Okay, it may be just Zoom. Um, oh, that's Wednesday, that's tomorrow. Tomorrow morning, so if anybody wants to be available for that, uh, NETMA is uh, next week, October nineteenth, that we get cut from five to seven PM. Organizational meeting, uh, the twenty-fifth, as the mayor alluded to, uh, following committee of the whole. That's great, whether it's a long day for me. Intergovernmental meeting, um, October twenty-seventh at two PM. And then budget presentations, November fifteen and sixteen. Um, I think there's a, a few more things happening in the community, like on the thirtieth, we have a nightmare, I cannot thrive. Um, going on from JCT's. We'll have more information on that at the next committee, next meeting on that. Um, as well as, is there any planning going towards our Christmas party this year? We're gonna, is there gonna be a in-person gathering at the activity center? I'm just, it doesn't have to be answered today, it's just uh, looking forward to having something on the radar, what weekend we're gonna do that. So, not to be done big, um, if anybody, no one else has anything to add, councillor, mayor, or?
Just a reminder, an email, I think, from director Reed late last week, goes an Indigenous Partners meeting in this room tomorrow evening, sometime at six or five, maybe, six thirty? Just a reminder.
Thank you for that.
And it's not just a long day for you.
I know. I know how painful I can make it on others too, and it's not just about people. Councillor Waxer?
I apologize about missing the Indigenous Partners meeting tomorrow evening, uh, but I think it would probably be counterproductive to have a Zoom participation at a, 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 that type of event, so uh, I would have been willing to put the time into it, but I, I don't think it's appropriate, so I uh, just wanted to send my regrets.
And uh, my regrets too, I had a previous engagement, uh, there's something that I'm physically organizing, so uh, might have some difficulty attending tomorrow as well. Does anyone else have anything to add? Upcoming events, okay, then we can move on to eleven. Do I actually need by procedure a motion to adjourn, or can I just adjourn? We're not there yet. All right, we're not there yet. Um, all right, and does someone like to motion to adjourn?
I've been silenced.
Councillor Waxer, thank you. We are now adjourned. At
Yeah, we have to vote on motion.
Oh, sorry, we have to vote on motion, all in favor? Twelve forty-seven PM, thank you, still can't be done without a mayor. That's why we love you so much. Thank you, everybody.